The first part in the Mountain View portion of the Silicon Valley at Home candidate forums. So with us now, just joining us is Sally Lieber, former Mountain View City Council member and a state assembly member. We also have Lisa Matticak, she's a current Mountain View City Council member. Then we've got Paul Roales, he is a software engineer at Waymo. Then we've got Lenny Siegel, a former city council member as well. Thank you all for joining us. And so, you know, I think we want to make sure that everybody sees the timer for the questions we'll be asking. We're going to have a two-minute response time. And I just want to make sure, does everybody know the ground rules on that? Just a two-minute response time for these four or five questions? Awesome, awesome. Yeah, so I'll go ahead and get started. All right, but and then also, audience members, you may submit questions through the Q and A box at the bottom of the Zoom call. So it's just there at the center bottom. But yeah, feel free to send us some questions. Okay, so the first question that we have is, city council approved a plan for almost 10,000 new homes in North Bay Shore in 2017. But so far, just a few hundred have received entitlements. And are you committed to ensuring that the 9,000-plus new homes for North Bay Shore get built? And how do you, how will you make it sure that happens? So basically getting those thousands of new homes built in North Bay Shore. And let's start with Sally Lieber. Sally, could you start us off talking about North Bay Shore and new homes?
Well, thank you so much, and thanks to everyone who's joining in here tonight. I always think it's a real honor to have people show up during the dinner hour to talk about policy. And, and thanks to Silicon Valley at Home for having us in. You know, I think North Bay Shore and the housing there is really emblematic of what we have to do. And it is intertwined with our current economy and with finding willing partners among the development community. But I think that we have to really make a full-court press on more housing in Mountain View, and that's going to be a critical piece of it. What I am especially interested in is to see that we get more affordable housing, truly affordable housing, and that we retain the housing that we have. But obviously, North Bay Shore is a unique opportunity for us. And I think that we should do everything in our power to pursue it, but also pursue other opportunities, other, not other, but surplus properties, underused properties belonging to other agencies that are here in town, and make sure that we're working with very large-scale employers, many of whom are in North Bay Shore, to get a commitment from them to help support housing as well. So that's what my thoughts are there.
Awesome. Thank you, Sally. And Lisa, could you please, you know, talk about North Bay Shore new homes and how we can get it done and stuff?
Sure. So, as you know, you know, the city had a general plan, and we identified two areas for substantial change, but there were five change areas in general. And North Bay Shore and East Wisman were the two where we have rezoned for substantial housing. And the, I think, you know, I knew the challenge would be economics. The cost of land in North Bay Shore and the lack of infrastructure makes it a very challenging place to build housing. And so, I'd always said that East Wisman was a better place to start, and indeed, that's what we're seeing. We have, the property owner has submitted their master plan to the city for East Wisman, and they will start with building housing as opposed to offices in that area. So, in North Bay Shore, you know, the city did their part in terms of rezoning to enable housing. And as was mentioned, we have the goal of having 20% affordable housing in both East Wisman and North Bay Shore. And as projects are considered in North Bay Shore, I think we are going to find that we're going to have to work with the property owner, you know, there's one major property owner there, and see whether or not adjustments to fees, concessions, and other things are, are what the community wants to support in order to get the housing in the new neighborhoods in North Bay Shore. We did make a concession on the first project in terms of a reduction in the park fees. But I would like to find a way to make sure we have great, complete neighborhoods, and that includes parks. So we're just going to have to work together on this one and see what's doable.
Thank you, Lisa. And yeah, Paul, would you like to talk about, you know, more homes in North Bay Shore and how to get it done?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the time, and thank you, everyone, for spending an hour of your evening with us tonight. It's certainly individuals that take that time to consider the issues that are facing our community that help to make our community a better place. And certainly, the North Bay Shore project is a project in an area that has a tremendous opportunity to make our community a better place and to really get at the heart of the lack of housing in our community. And so, it has been very disappointing that it's been multiple years since the council initially approved that project, and we've seen very little development there since. And, you know, part of that responsibility certainly rests on the developer, but a large part of that responsibility and the fault of that rests on the city and the continued requirements that they're placing even after that initial approval. So, you know, we've seen some of the buildings come up in that area that still require very extensive planning and a long planning process. Certainly contracting that planning process, simplifying it, you can get very high-quality projects done in that area without the cost of time and infrastructure and resources and city time that goes into that today. We're dealing with very responsible developers in that area that have a huge stake in producing a beautiful community that's very attractive in that neighborhood. And so, you know, there's less concern that we're going to see bad projects there that we need extensive 12-month-long, 24-month-long planning review on. And so, you know, there is a lot that needs to be done in terms of infrastructure, and that takes time. But, you know, we're talking about something on the order of magnitude of $5 to $7 billion of residential development. That's a huge amount of value that's being created. And so, in terms of paying for the infrastructure and paying for what it's going to require to have a great community there, I'm not super worried about that. Certainly, we need to really focus on getting the housing to materialize, simply approving it's just not working, of course. Thank you.
Gotcha. Very interesting. And so, Lenny, would you like to talk about, you know, new homes in North Bay Shore and, you know, what, how you would make that happen?
Sure. The North Bay Shore Precise Plan Residential Update, which we enacted in December of 2017, was a centerpiece of my activity on the city council. The plan is to build nearly 10,000 housing units, 20% of which would be affordable, and what has been a suburban office park, instead to create a medium-density mixed-use, mixed in some complete neighborhood with parks, schools, habitat, retail, the whole thing. Unfortunately, the incumbents in this race did everything they could while we were developing that plan to reduce the amount of housing. In fact, they almost killed the whole plan in June of 2017. So it's no surprise that the city hasn't done very much to resolve the differences between the landowners, particularly SciWest and Google, to get housing built in the gateway. And again, the city hasn't done anything to talk to VTA to make its property available. They, this is some of the most valuable land in the county, and it's being used to park buses. And if we're going to meet our goal of 2,900 units in the Pear area, we have to build housing on the VTA property. So, you know, it's really interesting to me. We had a pro-housing majority on the city council from 2015 to 2018. And now we have people on the council who pretend they're pro-housing, but they really aren't walking the walk. And I'm urging people to vote for people who want to produce the housing, who want to protect tenants, and who want to prevent demolitions. This is, you know, Mountain View took the lead regionally in making plans to build housing, but since 2019, we have not kept up with our promises. So, again, we can build housing in North Bay Shore. Google's got the money to pay for most of it. We just have to move forward, and we need a council that wants to move forward, not slow things down.
Gotcha. I appreciate that. Thank you, everyone, for your answers there. And so, our next question here, do you support Mountain View's rent control ordinance, the CSFRA? And should mobile homes be covered under the CSFRA, the rent control ordinance? And, you know, or are there other ways you think the ordinance should be amended or changed? Or maybe the Rental Housing Commission? We'll start off with Paul, if you want to talk about the rent control in Mountain View and whether mobile homes should be covered.
Yeah, thank you. There's quite a few topics you asked about there, so I'll hope to get to all of them. So first, I just want to start out in a very clear way and say, yes, I support our current CSFRA and what we've passed. I think voters have overwhelmingly said, and two votes now, including a 70% vote, this is the spring, to say that this is what we prefer in our community. And so, we need to give that a few years to play out in our community before we ever think about touching it again. We need to see its impacts on the market before we consider what adjustments may be necessary. And so, yes, I do support what we have today. And, you know, the second part of your question, I, when I read the text, when I look at it, when I talk to lawyers, you know, my understanding of what the text is that we have today is that it should apply to mobile homes. So I do support extending that to mobile homes. I think you asked just a little bit about, you know, what would we do about the Rental Housing Committee and how should that be structured? I'd really love to see that expanded to seven members, where each council appoints one member with their individual jurisdiction. I think this would provide a lot more clarity, as Lenny often speaks about. The, you know, you can't just hide behind someone else you've appointed to a committee, that you'd have your own individual on that committee. It'd be very clear that that individual hopefully agreed with your positions and was, you know, reflecting the votes that have been cast for you as a council member on that commission. And so, I'd like to see that be a lot more clear. I'd also like to see, you know, very contentious important issues like if rent control applies to mobile homes decided at the council level. It makes me very uncomfortable when I see contentious, important topics like that decided in unelected committees. And so, you know, I'd like to see important issues like that brought up and decided by elected officials that, of course, have to answer to voters. And so, that's a couple of my thoughts. I hope I got to most of your multi-part question there. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. It was kind of an expansive question. But yeah, thank you for your answer. Lisa, would you like to talk about, you know, the rent control ordinance? You know, any changes you would make and whether mobile homes should be included? And then you could talk about the rental commission as well.
Yeah, so I do have concerns about rent control, and I think we're seeing some of the issues with it now. While it did help people who were in place at the time, you know, it doesn't necessarily help folks who are new to the city. And I, as I read the CSFRA, and as I read especially the ballot statements about it, it's clear to me that the CSFRA does not cover it because the ballot statement says that it could be extended to cover mobile homes. And I think that was probably written that way because most cities, if they have both rent control for apartments and rent control for mobile homes, have separate ordinances. And there's a good reason for that, and that's because the Mobile Home Residency Law, the MRL, which is a state law, has a lot of conflicts with the CSFRA. So it makes sense to have a separate ordinance, make it clean and clear, and have the ordinance for the mobile home parks not be in conflict with the Mobile Home Residency Law. So the council is heading down the path for an ordinance to cover mobile home parks. What we said we wanted to do was take a look at a model lease and also rent control. And my personal opinion is that we would have both. And if a park owner would agree to a model lease, which is very similar to rent stabilization, then they would not be subjected to the ordinance. But if they can't come to an agreement on a model lease, then they would be subject to an ordinance. And I don't see why we can't start having that conversation now. You know, there's some legal action going on. Eventually, that will be solved. But we still have another conversation we need to have about this before we take action on it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. And so, Sally, would you like to talk about, you know, rent control in Mountain View, you know, for mobile homes? And any changes you would make to either the ordinance or the rental housing commission?
Sure. I strongly support rent control for Mountain View, and I strongly support implementing the will of the voters. I think that we've wasted a lot of time in cycles on trying to re-debate it, and in particular, on appointments to the committee that were people who just are diametrically opposed to rent control. And I think that that makes things very difficult and wastes everyone's time when you get into that type of a situation. It's really clear to me that it has to be applied to mobile home parks and that it has to be applied to vacancies in parks as well, and that we have to have transparency on the, what the parameters are for someone being able to buy into a mobile home park at the time when they buy in, so that they know what a person will have to have to be able to qualify to later purchase their mobile home. Because the abuses of that have really put mobile home homeowners in a very precarious position. And I think that we also have to cover the renters in the mobile home parks as well because not everyone is living in a home that they own and renting only the ground lease. There are renters in the parks, too. We also need, in terms of protections for people in the mobile home parks, more than just a zoning overlay. We need a really protective conversion ordinance to be able to protect the largest investment in most folks' lives, their home. And I am eager to see people who are bona fide, committed to this community, appointed to the mobile home, to, excuse me, the rental board.
Yeah, thank you, Sally. And then, Lenny, yeah, would you like to talk about, you know, you know, the rent control ordinance, you know, whether to expand rent control to mobile homes? And then also, you know, any changes you would make to the ordinance or to the rental housing committee?
Thank you. So I was the only council member in 2016 who supported Measure V, the CSFRA. And when we put it on the ballot, I said, that's very clear that this covers mobile homes. And it has to, because when mobile home space rents go up, people lose the equity in their homes. We've got people who've been living there for decades, people on fixed incomes. The failure to provide rent control for mobile homes is really hurting people. Once, once we won the court case, the council appointed the Rental Housing Committee. And true to form, the incumbents in this race said they didn't want to appoint anybody to the Rental Housing Committee who had supported Measure V. And so, we ended up with a Rental Housing Committee that was hostile to the intent of the voters, and they're the ones that excluded mobile homes. So now we're in a situation, you know, the council majority put Measure D on the ballot to weaken rent control. They colluded with the Apartment Association in putting that forward, and the voters turned that down 70 to 30. It's pretty clear that Mountain View voters think rent control is working, and we've proven that you can build housing and have rent control at the same time. So now, looking forward, the landlords pulled their sneaky repeal off the ballot. So what's their strategy for weakening rent control? They want to elect, re-elect the incumbents, elect their ally, so they can again appoint people to the Rental Housing Committee who want to weaken rent control. This year, in March, I was talking to the mobile home residents and lawyers about a ballot measure to make it clear that the CSFRA covers mobile homes. Unfortunately, COVID hit, and we couldn't go out and collect signatures. So it's, yeah, we have an inequitable situation. Some people are protected and some people aren't. I'm protecting as many people as possible. And those people, you know, and the people who pretend that they're for rent control or pretend they're for protecting mobile homeowners should be honest with the voters.
All right. Thank you, Lenny. Yeah, so thank you all for your responses. And the next question is, the city is in the process of developing an anti-displacement policy. What strategies would you like to see included in this anti-displacement strategy? And to prevent the displacement of lower-income residents in Mountain View? And Lisa, we'll start it off with you, you know, how do, what do you want to see as a part of the city's anti-displacement strategy?
Well, the council has already taken some action to address this, and that is, we made changes to our Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance so that folks who are displaced have more benefits and more protections. But actually, I think SB 330 is the best anti-displacement policy that exists right now because it's going to be very challenging for any property owner or developer to displace folks because of the requirements of SB 330. At the last council meeting, we talked about, you know, do we really think SB 330 is going to continue on until 2025 when it sunsets in the present form? Probably not, because I think everyone sees the issues with it. And so, we need to be prepared with our own anti-displacement policies in the event, or I guess I should say, in the very likely event, that SB 330 will be amended. So that's something we're going to talk about. You know, do we want to exactly replicate what's in SB 330? Maybe there's a better solution to that. But we need to be prepared because I think SB 330 will be amended. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. And so, you know, same question to you, Lenny. You know, just talking about the city's anti-displacement strategy, and what policies do you think should be a part of that?
Yeah, let's be honest. The council majority, and this was true when I was in the minority on the council, repeatedly voted to tear, approve the demolition of naturally affordable rent-controlled apartments. And we could very simply, when SB 330 expires, we could very simply say, we aren't going to do that. We didn't have to do it. The tenants objected, but the council majority voted for that. So we, you know, it's pretty simple, you know, you don't do it, you know. But on the positive side, the way to make it, you know, developers, okay, or, you know, make them whole, is what we're trying to do with our plans, which is to build housing not in existing neighborhoods, not in, not to tear down rent-controlled apartments, but to make commercial property, office parks, and shopping centers available for redevelopment. Mountain View's shown in our planning, it's not happening at the level that I'd like to see, but we've shown in our planning that we could increase our housing stock by at least 75% without tearing down any apartments and without undermining existing single-family neighborhoods. So there's a positive strategy of deciding where housing can be best be built, and that's near employment centers, near and near transit, you know, including downtown. And the next, the, on the, not really negative, but the, the way to protect people is not to approve these things. Usually, there's something in a plan that the city has to approve. We, we still don't know what's happening with Gamma Way, where the city's been negotiating with a developer to sell land to the developer so that they can tear down apartments. The intent of protecting people isn't there with the current council. And elect me and the people who agree with me to make things better.
Thank you, Lenny. And so, you know, Paul, would you like to answer that question talking about the city's anti-displacement strategy? And what policy should be a part of that?
Yeah, thank you. There's lots of small programs that'll help on that margins. But what we really need long-term is a healthy, local market that produces housing that's affordable for everyone along the economic spectrum on a routine basis. That's the ultimate solution to this, and that's the ultimate solution to stopping displacement in our community. And so, I would like to see the council spend a lot more of its time focused on what is the long-term solution to getting our area to a healthy market that produces naturally affordable housing on a routine basis. I think too much of the council's time today is spent on approving or debating individual projects, spending four hours on a Tuesday night debating 555 Middlefield or something else, is really taking away from valuable time that could be spent really solving this problem for our entire community. Because no matter how many small programs you have to stop displacement, you know, you're going to see periods like now where something like 10 to 15% of our renters are just left to the community voluntarily because they don't see that this is a community that works for them economically right now. And so, it is an incredibly important issue. It's incredibly important right now. But we really need to be not losing sight of the forests in discussing, you know, individual trees or individual housing projects. You know, SB 330 is very important, and I agree with Mrs. Matticak that, you know, I think it will change over time. We see the state continuously revisit this issue, and we see the city continuously revisit this issue. That's good, because we're not at a good solution today. And so, you know, I just want to see a plan for the next 12 to 24 months, something in a very short time span to really get after this housing affordability issue in our area and really try to at least have a solution that gets us to a healthy place in the near term. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Paul. And Sally, you know, want to talk about, you know, the city's anti-displacement strategy, and what policies do you think should be a part of that?
Well, as Lenny talked about, I think that the proof is really in the pudding. How many people are getting displaced? And right now, it's an incredible number. And I would like to see council make findings when projects are approved of how many people are displaced. And I think if a vote is taken saying, we are approving this project, but we acknowledge that this, this is the number of families that will be displaced due to this choice, that it might provide some really useful information for council and for the community as well. I, I don't agree with taking council out of the process, as Paul suggested, because the fact is that applicants have a right to come before elected officials to have the elected officials make that quasi-judicial determination. And that's just part of, part of good governance. So that's one of the principles that we're not going to give up on. We don't vest those powers in, in staff. People have a right to come before elected officials. And I do think that we should push at the state level for no net loss. And I think that the inherent in that is that we have to get Mountain View into the game in terms of what happens in Sacramento. Mountain View has been almost exclusively missing in any reforms that happen there. And I think that that has to turn around. Because if, if you're not at the table, then you're on the menu.
Very good. Thank you, Sally. All right, so our last two-minute question just talks about overall housing production in the city. You know, of course, you know, Mountain View has done a lot better per its population in producing more housing. But we're still just meeting a third of the affordable housing goals here for the RENA allocation, which is the state allocation for different regions, and then it's broken down city by city. So the draft goals for the next eight-year cycle through 2030 or 2031, it's more than three times higher. So we're looking at more than 11,000 units of housing needed by 2031. And what's your plan for the city of Mountain View to meet these higher housing goals or to at least increase the housing production? Let me see. Let me start, let me start with you, Sally. You know, how can we increase the housing production in the city of Mountain View, particularly for affordable housing?
Well, I think we have to look at surplus properties, underutilized properties, at the underutilized commercial spaces that are out there, at the possibilities of, of land banking and, and property consolidation to make projects work. And we have to have new funding. There has to be more money in the system because oftentimes, there are good opportunities, but you can't make the deal work because you can put in maybe some federal funding through McKinney Act and, and other pieces of the puzzle, but it just doesn't bridge the gap. So we have to have new funding sources coming in. And I think that we have to focus really on that extremely low income, low income and the missing middle of, of property types and not throw out any possibilities. I would like to see a plan for funding of ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, that's similar to what the County of Santa Cruz is doing, where they help you get through the planning process. They, they fund the, part of the ADU with a They, they fund the, part of the ADU with a low-interest loan. And then they find qualified tenants using a nonprofit to source possible tenants for you. And it really makes it possible and seamless for homeowners to be able to turn that supply on. And I, I think it's just got to be something that we put a full court press on right now. Because currently, the displacement is massive. And it's going to come back to really hurt us when we're looking for healthcare workers, childcare workers, home care workers, retail workers and others that are critical to our community.
Thank you, Sally. And Lenny, would you like to answer that as well? You know, talking about how to increase housing production in Mountain View, particularly for affordable, affordable housing?
So when I was on council, we had basically two strategies for building more housing in Mountain View. The first was standalone affordable housing. And we, the city would collect funds from developers, office developers, outside money to build affordable housing. In many parts of the city, we have a continuing pipeline of projects that are being proposed. We're building them as fast as we can fund them. I helped with some of the developers, helping them find properties, underutilized properties, parking lots. We're planning affordable housing on Lot Twelve, our downtown parking lot. All of our downtown surface parking should be turned into affordable housing with retail on the ground floor and underground parking. So, so that's the standalone. The standalone is important because they provide services. We have projects that serve families. We have projects that serve the elderly. We have projects that serve the developmentally disabled. The other strategy is building a lot of market-rate housing. And Mountain View has this huge housing, jobs, housing imbalance. And the only way to deal with the supply and demand relationship is to build a lot of housing. The nice side of that is if you build ten thousand units in North Bay Shore and you require that fifteen percent, maybe twenty percent of them be affordable, that will build more affordable housing, below-market rate housing, than the city has built its entire history. So building market-rate housing isn't in opposition to affordable housing. It helps it. And finally, I agree with Sally about accessory dwelling units. Not only benefits the people who will live in that, and it benefits the, the retired homeowners who need some revenue from their property. But the city's got to do more than allow it, and we need to relax some of the restrictions on it. And we have to work with, create a program, with a turnkey program, where people sign up and they get help on getting approvals, funding and, and contracting so that they can build on their property. Because it's hard to remodel. It's hard to put in an ADU. We need to help people do it.
Gotcha. Thanks, Lenny. And so Lisa, would you answer that as well? You know, how can we increase housing production in Mountain View, particularly affordable housing?
So as we mentioned before, we did update our general plan and identified five change areas, two of which can have substantial new housing. So the city has done a great deal already to enable, which is our role, housing to be built. The RENA numbers are not final yet for the next period, but I imagine they are going to be much more aggressive than for the previous period. And one of the things we've already done to increase the affordable housing is to increase the requirements. It used to be ten percent. Now it's fifteen percent. And we have incentives in the two areas, North Bay Shore, East Wisman, to get twenty percent, as was mentioned. And while that is good, because we also require the units to be built rather than have in-lu fees, that reduction in, in lieu fees now makes it more challenging for the city to help fund standalone projects. Well, we'll still have some revenue coming in in that regard, but it does make it more challenging because we won't have the amount of in-lu fees that we used to have. But we will have the units built. One of the things we're looking at is the R-three zoning district to see what we can do to increase housing in that area. And in particular, housing for the missing middle. We haven't taken a look at the R-three in quite some time, but I think there is some possibilities, especially for stacked flat ownership condos, where it's kind of an entry level for somebody who does want to enter the ownership market. They have their challenges, but we're hoping that by changing the rules and regulations and incentives, we can get some more missing middle housing in the R-three district. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you, Lisa. And Paul, yeah, what do you think the city should do to increase housing production here, particularly affordable housing?
Yeah, there's a lot we can do. So right now, it's just structurally impossible in a lot of situations to build affordable housing. And this is naturally affordable housing that, you know, doesn't require cross subsidies or city programs. It's just, you know, we're only seeing production of high-end housing because we have a set of rules and a set of processes in the city that only allow that, basically. And so we really need to take a deep look at that. And we need to take a deep look at the economics of what it would take for developers without subsidies, without cross programs that fund the affordable housing. What it would take for us to reform to get to a place where we can have housing that's available to middle-income people in our community built on a routine basis. That's the real key. That's the real end goal here we need to be working towards. There's a lot we can do to speed up the development of housing in the meantime. You know, the Gatekeeper program is a huge problem in our community. This is a program that prevents the city's staff from even looking at new projects. And so we need to expand city staff, expand our planning department, find new leadership, so that we can review every single project that's proposed by developers in our community. We should not be holding up and telling developers no before we even consider a project, before we even look at its merits. And so that, to me, indicates there's some deep dysfunction in our planning department that is just not, you know, efficient about how they're reviewing these, about how they're staffing these, about how we're approaching the review of projects. And so, you know, we really need to speed up and simplify how we approve projects. Developers will tell you a non-trivial percentage, something like fifteen to seventeen percent of the cost of new projects is our incredibly expensive elaborate planning process. And so if you could move into a new unit and you got three hundred dollars off, you know, first day because you had a simplified planning process, you're going to notice that. That's a real win. And so that helps us move towards more affordable units. Lots of things we can do. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you, Paul. All right. Thank you all for your, you know, in-depth answers there. Now we're moving to the rapid-fire questions. We've got three rapid-fire questions. And we will simply just take a yes or no. Just leave it at that. So just three questions here, simple yes or no. The first question is, do you support Prop fifteen, the schools and community-first position on the state ballot? We'll start with you, Sally. Prop fifteen, yes or no?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And so, yeah, now, Paul, Prop fifteen, yes or no?
Yes, I support Prop fifteen as well.
Awesome. And then, Lenny, Prop fifteen, yes or no?
Yes.
Awesome. And then Lisa, Prop fifteen, yes or no?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. And then I'm going to wind my way back around. Now, we're talking about Prop sixteen, ending California's ban on affirmative action. Kind of, I know we might not have been expecting this on the housing forum. But yeah, so, you know, affirmative action. Lisa, I'll start with you. Prop sixteen, yes or no?
Yes.
All right. And then, Lenny, Prop sixteen, yes or no?
Yes, I support affirmative action.
Great. And then, Paul, Prop sixteen, yes or no?
Yes, I support this. Thank you.
Sally, Prop sixteen, yes or no?
Yes, wholeheartedly.
Awesome. And the last rapid-fire is just with the Caltrain, Measure RR, funding, increasing funding for Caltrain. We'll start with you, Paul. Should we increase funding for Caltrain with Measure RR, yes or no?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Awesome. And then, Lenny Siegel, Measure R, yes or no?
Yes, but there should have been a better way than a regressive tax.
I hear what you're saying. Sally, Prop, excuse me, Measure R, yes or no for Caltrain?
Uh, yes, with governance reforms.
Here you are. And Lisa, you know, Measure R for Caltrain, yes or no?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you all. And then our last question before we get to our audience questions. This is a simple one-minute answer, as you see on the timer. We're talking about Measure C, commonly referred to as the RV ban. And, you know, it's, of course, on the November ballot, you know, also known as the narrow streets ordinance. What's your position on Measure C? And then you have a minute to elucidate on that. You know, let me see, let me start with you, Sally. Measure C, the narrow streets ordinance or RV ban, what's your position on that?
I strongly oppose Measure C. I think it's the absolutely wrong time in the middle of a pandemic to chase and displace families who have already been chased out of housing in Mountain View and are doing everything in their power to avoid utter homelessness. And I think that we need to find better ways, increase the level of safe parking that we have, increase the availability of, of parking that's for more than two hours, and the stability of being able to leave your home in one place. And I think it needs to be dispersed over the city. And I, I think that we should be working with the families that are in the RVs and using our compassion, working with the faith community. But the middle of the pandemic is absolutely the wrong time to chase people around.
I hear you. Thank you, Sally. And then, Paul, you know, curious to know your position on Measure C, also known as the narrow streets ordinance or the RV ban?
Thank you. I do support Measure C. And to Sally's point, I think we can take into consideration current conditions when we go to implement this. Unfortunately, we can't move the election date back until after the pandemic is over to make this decision. So we have a somewhat inflexible election. I do support Measure C in this election. You know, I've been very disappointed in our approach to safe parking. I think we should have a safe parking spot for everyone in our community that needs one. It's been four and a half years that our council's been considering this issue. And, you know, after four and a half years, we came up with thirty safe parking spots. And that's, that's pretty bad. And so we have six hundred unhoused or unsuitably housed individuals in our community. We need to be providing safe parking for all of them. You know, it's kind of been late action here, but we, we're starting to get more parking available. And we need to continue to provide a safe parking spot for everyone that needs one. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thanks, Paul. And Lisa, you know, can you tell us your position on Measure C? Of course, the narrow streets ordinance or the RV ban?
So I do support Measure C, the narrow streets ordinance. It's not a ban. There will still be some streets where oversized vehicles can park. But more importantly, we have the safe parking lots, and we have well more than thirty spots. We have services that are offered to the folks who are in the safe lots. But the really nice thing about them is people work with caseworkers and then ultimately find more stable housing. We've had great success. When folks work with caseworkers on housing, they find housing. I guess I'm kind of frustrated with this one because I feel like it's been misconstrued when in fact what we're trying to do is help people. And helping them is best done in the safe lots. There's not a waiting list anymore for the safe lots. So everyone who wanted a space has a space. And we're helping the folks who want help and the folks who had some sort of connection to Mountain View or are elderly or disabled. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thanks, Lisa. And Lenny, you know, what's your position on Measure C or the narrow streets ordinance or commonly known as the RV ban?
So I oppose Measure C. I'm the one who organized the petition to put it on the ballot. I think it's reprehensible, and I'm really upset by the dishonesty of the proponents. This is not about traffic. It is not about parking. It's about gentrification. The, I proposed safe parking in two thousand and sixteen. But when the city implemented it, we had so many restrictions. You can't have electricity. How do you survive in this heat wave without electricity? You know, it's designed just as a fig leaf for the policy of throwing people out of town. And as far as caseworking, caseworkers go, I support caseworkers for all these folks. But most, most, maybe all the people who found housing as a result of that have been forced to leave Mountain View. Most of the people who are living in vehicles are people with jobs. Most of those jobs are in Mountain View. They're people with connections to our community. And I strongly oppose trying to throw them out, even before COVID nineteen.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone, for your, you know, comments about Measure C. And so now, we're going to move on to some audience-generated questions. Question number one that we have. Mountain View does not yet have a Measure A-funded, permanent supportive housing development. What would you do to provide housing for people experiencing homelessness in Mountain View? I think, I think, I think I hear what they're saying, you know, in terms of like permanent housing for people that are going to need housing continually. And so let me go ahead and start with Paul. Why don't we talk about, you know, how can we increase permanent supportive housing, such as for the, the chronically homeless?
Yeah. I mean, the grant we got that, you know, provides transitionary housing is great. That's a great step, and it shows that the city is capable of moving very quickly. And, you know, so certainly, like, we need to continue that, to move quickly, to provide mechanisms, to provide permanently supportive housing. You know, it's a regional solution, right? And so we need to be building regional coalitions. And we need to be meeting regularly in public with other councils to be building solutions that work together to provide housing. Because, you know, we're not going to, Mountain View, we should do a lot. We should do everything we can. But this issue is so large, we're not going to be able to solve it on our own. And so, you know, building a regional coalition to really solve this, I think, is, is the one way to get this issue done. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And apologies, I forgot to say that this is a one-minute response for this question, the audience questions. And so Sally, I'd like to know what you think can be done to, you know, build a permanent housing for the chronically homeless here in Mountain View?
We need really compact housing that's close to services and transit, that has the supportive services in-house with it. And I think that regionally, we need inebriate housing and some of those specialized kinds of housing that would reduce our costs on public safety. But I think that we have to be careful about talking about caseworkers are going to move people from transitional into permanent housing or from RVs into permanent housing. When I've gone to the Community Services Agency to try to see if we can make a match for housing, you know, for specific constituents, they say there's just nothing out there. So we have to really focus on the production of compact, affordable housing that's affordable to extremely low-income individuals.
Awesome. Thank you, Sally. And so, let me see. Lenny, can you talk about, you know, how to create more permanent supportive housing, such as for the chronically homeless here in Mountain View?
So I serve on the county's Measure A Oversight Committee. And I'm, I, Mountain View actually has a few projects in the pipeline that are likely to get funded. It's really tricky because the portion of the projects that are funded by the county have to serve people from throughout the county, not just from Mountain View. Whereas Mountain View, when it provides funding, wants to serve people primarily from Mountain View. And getting those packages together is, is tricky. I had proposed originally for the VTA site where we now have safe parking, Pioneer and Evelyn, that we have a, not only, we have, we have home, you know, a shelter, permanent supportive housing, and maybe affordable housing on the same property with a continuum of care, caseworkers to help work people up through each stage. We need, you know, it's, it's true. People need to get into more permanent housing, but it's not easy for them to do it, particularly with, with the high cost of housing here. People need help, and we can provide it on publicly-owned property if we do it right.
Awesome. Thank you, Lenny. And so Lisa, you know, talking about permanent supportive housing, such as for the chronically homeless here in Mountain View, you know, how can we help fund that and get that built here in the city?
And we do have a couple of projects in the works, and we have some that are already in existence. And, you know, as I was mentioning before, with the reduction in our affordable housing fees, because the housing will actually be built as opposed to in-lu fees, it does make it a bit because the housing will actually be built as opposed to in lieu fees, it does make it a bit more challenging. The concern I had with the Measure A funding is, you know, we really do want to help folks who are living, working in Mountain View. And if we take Measure A funding, we cannot have that preference. So that makes it a bit of a challenge. So I feel like we need to be creative here. I appreciate the partnership we have to do the 100 units, the Home Key project, you know, the project we did with the school district. I think partnerships are key. We've got some great affordable housing providers that I think we can work with to bring more to our city. Thanks.
Thank you. And did I forget anyone on that question? I think I got Paul, Lenny, Sally. Okay, good. All right. Thank you, everyone. And so next question is, you know, several parking lots in downtown Mountain View near the Caltrain stops such as Lot 12 are being redeveloped. Oh, excuse me. This is talking about those that are being redeveloped as office buildings. What can we do to create more transit-oriented development in Mountain View to get people less reliant on their cars? You know, rather than developing offices near transit, you know, how can we switch that to more homes near transit? Let me go over to you, Lisa. How can we get more homes built near transit stops?
Well, I would say we need to work on transportation first to make it effective and efficient because even if you build homes near transit, if the transit is not a good option, people will still be driving cars. You know, I was opposed to the office developments in downtown Mountain View because actually Caltrain is a good form of public transportation. And so I do support more housing near it. But that wasn't what the council majority wanted and an office development was approved. You know, I think we have plans in place to put housing near transit. East Wisman is one example. But we do need to improve light rail. It's a very slow, inefficient form of public transportation. Did you say we had a minute? I think I had more. Thanks.
Maybe, yeah. Thank you for keeping your eye on that. Yeah, thank you, Lisa. And so let me go over to Lenny. You know, Lenny, how can we build more homes near transit as opposed to office buildings?
Well, first step is a moratorium on office development in downtown Mountain View. We've got plenty of places where we can build housing. There are proposals for redevelopment, but everybody wants to build offices. And part of the problem is we need to aggregate property to do the kind of parking that's necessary to serve housing. So that's the first thing. Secondly, the actual Caltrain parking lot owned by Caltrain is a great opportunity for building housing. We're going to have to make sure that it's sound, protected against sound if high-speed rail comes through. But if we eliminate the grade crossing, we won't have the horns anymore and electrification will make it quieter. So, so there's a great opportunity to build housing actually on the Caltrain parking lot with parking underneath it. So that's, that's, that's the best place to build transit-oriented development in Mountain View. In North Bay Shore, we have to build transit-oriented development by not only building housing, but by building the transit, such as the automated guideway that I proposed way back in 2015.
Thank you, Lenny. And so Paul, let me talk to you here about, you know, transit-oriented housing. How can we get more of that versus, you know, transit-oriented offices? Yeah.
Yeah. And so even if we had three or five or a dozen residential-only projects right on top of the Caltrain station, you know, that would leave 75,000, 80,000 residents that are not, that still need to get in their car to go around their town. So I really think of this in two ways. We need bike lanes that you can get everywhere in town, you know, safely. And you feel comfortable putting your child in that bike lane. So we need bike lanes that are more than just a strip of paint along a busy road. We need protected, grade-separated bike lanes throughout our community. The second part of that is we do need to build some transit that's Mountain View-specific, that's Mountain View-funded, to get from our job center to our downtown. We've been planning and discussing this for decades. We need to really start materializing that. We need to do so on a quick basis. If you look at towns like Racine, Wisconsin, they were able to do that for something on the order of maybe tens of millions in 12 or 24 months. And so we need to think about transformative ways that we can really get things done quickly and affordably. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Paul. And so Sally, you know, how can we get more transit-oriented housing development as opposed to, you know, not just like office development?
I think that there are opportunities in Mountain View to have that. They're going to come up principally through redevelopment. And I think that we need to weave into that, the, looking at the cost of the transit and transit justice. The fact is that the average income of folks who are on Caltrain is 120,000 a year because Caltrain is incredibly expensive and the cost for riders is expected to go up in the near future. And, you know, when it costs $8 one way to go from Sunnyvale to downtown Redwood City, you are not going to find working folks on that train. So buses and bicycle infrastructure are where it's at. And I think that, you know, very bad decisions have been made in the past to put huge, single-family homes directly opposite the train. We have to look at other spots for the luxury housing and put working housing close to transit.
Gotcha. Thank you so much, Sally. And thank you, everyone, for joining us. We'll go now to closing statements. And Lisa, would you like to give us a one-minute closing statement?
Sorry, my mute didn't come off. Thanks very much for holding this forum. I appreciate it. I want to make it clear that Mountain View has enabled a great deal of housing and we have seen a lot come to fruition on El Camino in the San Antonio area and in other areas of the city where the economics worked. We want to make sure we have good plans so we get good neighborhoods. And that's what we've done in East Wisman and North Bay Shore. The next area where we're working on would be Moffett Boulevard. That was the fifth change area. And we need to work with the property owners and developers to have that all come to fruition. I don't think anyone on the council is trying to slow down housing. We want to make sure it's well-planned and well-executed so we have great neighborhoods and a great quality of life here in Mountain View. Thanks very much.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Lisa. And yeah, yeah, thank you. And Sally, would you like to give your closing statement, one-minute closing statement?
Sure. I want to thank everyone for taking part. This is a very important discussion. I hope that you'll check out all the candidates online and, and see if you'd like to commit to one campaign or another. You can be a supporter even if you don't live in Mountain View. But obviously, if you do live in Mountain View, you're going to have some choices to make. And I just want to thank the organizers for putting together this discussion. It's very important. And many of the people that, whose lives are dependent on what we do here do not have the time to be a part of discussions like this. So I want to thank everyone for being great advocates for everybody in our valley and everybody in Mountain View. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sally. And Lenny, would you like to give a closing statement?
Sure. So since I left the council, Mountain View has backslid on production, preservation, and protection, the three Ps. And so Mountain View is still a leader because of the momentum we built up in the time that I was on council. But we are far from accomplishing what we need. As Pat Showalter will tell you, we can't, you can't sleep in a plan. One of the things that I did when I was on the council, particularly when I was mayor, is I would speak at conferences, some organized by Silicon Valley at home, explaining the Mountain View model of building complete neighborhoods, not just building housing and building it on office parks and shopping centers. I take that message to Palo Alto, Cupertino and other cities. And in particular, I testified before the county about Stanford. Stanford needs to mitigate, Stanford can't buy housing in Mountain View and say they're mitigating their employment growth. They have to build housing on the Stanford campus. And I've been working for that for more than 50 years.
Thank you, Lenny. And Paul, yeah, please give us a closing statement for you.
Yes, thank you. What a pleasure to talk about housing for a full hour. Such an important issue for our community. So thank you, everyone, for joining us and thank you for hosting us this evening. What's clear to me is that what we've been doing is not working. When you have homelessness is up, when you have rents that are up, when you have individuals leaving the community in droves because they don't see a future for themselves and they don't see the numbers working off of themselves here, that's something that's not working. And so to me, it would be a mistake if we reelect the incumbents, if we reelect individuals that have been there before and then we repeat the mistakes they've made going forward. I have experience working in a city that moved much faster, that built high-quality projects that the community was proud of and had a planning department that was just much friendlier to developers and got a lot more done. And so I want to bring that culture to Mountain View and I'd hope for your support. Have some great experience and certainly want to move this issue forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And sorry, I'm getting swallowed in darkness here. But yeah, I appreciate everyone joining us and, you know, definitely, you know, hope you could take this message out to the people. And, you know, please do feel free, everyone, to join us at the next part of our Mountain View candidate forum featuring four other candidates for city council. Thank you, everyone.
Well, thank you not only for organizing the forum, but for all the work that you do to promote housing, not just in Mountain View, but throughout the region.